Welcome to this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Board of Education. Pursuant to the bylaws and applicable laws of the state of New Jersey, the board operates its meetings consistent with the provisions of Robert's Rules of Order. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, Cablevision, Channel 118, Verizon, FiOS, Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. Meeting was scheduled for this evening, Tuesday, September 16th, 2014. The board will take formal action on agenda items. Mr. Mara?
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of the board. The board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. Roll call, please.
Borcelly?
Here.
DePrima?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Hartman?
Mongan?
Here.
Singh?
Here.
Solakowski?
Here.
Weber?
Andriani?
Here.
Quorum exists?
Thank you. For the board and the members of the public, both Mr. Weber and Ms. Hartman have been in touch with me today. Ms. Hartman was sent home from work early. She's not feeling well, so she apologizes. Mr. Weber unfortunately has had a family tragedy and he is not available today. And I will explain the rest of that to you at another time. Alrighty, thank you. Would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, please stay, remain seated for a moment of silence. We'd like to acknowledge the death of Thomas Paul, and it's Coachella, teacher and principal, and Stanley Les Jr., teacher, and Stella Bentavania, guidance secretary, and Francis Patrick Gill, teacher, and to express our deepest sympathy to their family and friends. Could we have a moment, please? Thank you. At this time, I'd like to read the code of ethics. Every board member will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individual or schools. In all other matters, he or she will provide accurate information and, in concert with fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school. Thank you very much. At this time, I need to have an approval of the minutes? Or are we doing the addendum first?
No, I have administrative changes and then the addendums.
Okay. Mr. Mara has informed me we have a few administrative changes. Mr. Mara?
To the members of the public, there are administrative corrections affecting four separate motions on the published agenda. A schedule of those changes is in the rear of the studio, available for your review. For board members, those four administrative changes have been made on the agenda that was in your packet, and it's highlighted in blue. Anything that's on this agenda that was not discussed at the draft agenda meeting is new and is highlighted in yellow. Thank you, Ms. Andriani.
Okay. At this time, we need to add an addendum and move. Finance?
Just a motion to approve the addendum.
All right, we're approving the motion. So that's the addendum, finance. Could I have a motion for that, please?
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. May I have a second?
Single, single.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. At this time, is there any discussion? Seeing no, no hands from the board members, roll call, Mr. Mara?
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Borcelly?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
No vote.
Andriani?
Yes.
With a motion to add the addendum to the agenda, passes.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along to Ms. Anderson. We have a new member sitting up here with us this evening, and it's Shayla Anderson. Did I miss something?
Yeah.
Okay. Not yet, Ms. Anderson.
You need to get a motion to approve the minutes.
I need to approve the minutes. I apologize. I tried to do that before, but I was told the other thing came first. All right, so now I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Dunn will make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Mr. Borcelly will second.
Thank you, Mr. Bor, thank you, Mr. Borcelly. I do not believe we have any discussion on the minutes. Okay. Mr. Mara?
Borcelly?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Thank you. At this point, Ms. Anderson, we have our new student government. Are you the president?
Yes, I will be the president of Old Bridge High School this year. I'm Shayla Anderson, and I'm very happy to be here. Thank you. Here are some upcoming events at our high school this fall. This Friday will be our annual tailgate, and shirts, beads, and tickets are on sale at school, and shirts for the football game will be on sale for adults at the game. It will be a blackout this year. Peer, our peer leadership trip is this weekend, and it will take place at Camp Mason. It's a YMCA camp, and students will leave on Saturday morning and return home on Sunday night. Pinkout, we're getting ready for Pinkout this year. It will be on a Thursday, October 2nd. The senior dinner cruise will be held on October 8th. As far as clubs, clubs are beginning to have their first interest meetings, and the club fair was held on September 10th. Senate begins a meeting on Tuesday, September 23rd, and freshmen are invited to attend. Homecoming, our homecoming theme this year is a night down the shore, and it will be a beach theme, and it'll take place on October 16th. We are getting ready for Disney as well. It'll be June 5th to the 9th, and seniors have paid their first Disney deposits and paperwork, and it's due by September 30th. And as far as a highlight for fall sports, the girls volleyball team has a record of 4-0, and they are the reigning GMC champions.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any other sports you'd like to report on at this time?
Well, our football team won against North Runzick last Friday. It was 28 to 0. We also had a fan bus sent there. It had about 44 students on it, and we also had a very large crowd for an away game, and we're expecting a even larger crowd for our first home game this Friday against Edison.
Time?
It will be at 7:00.
You heard the lady. This Friday, 7 o'clock.
Come out and support.
At Lombardi Field?
Yes, at Lombardi Field.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
No problem.
At this time, Mr. Sidedino, superintendent's report.
While I'm just providing some information of the superintendent's report, Ms. Kibler, our assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, you can get ready to prepare for your informational piece about the elementary challenge program. But I wanted to just say, I wanted to commend our entire staff, our instructional staff, our administrative staff, our support staff, our transportation department, and our maintenance staff for a smooth opening. We added, we went from 297 kindergarten students at the close of last year to 582 full-day kindergarten students in the general education classrooms in one year. Just adding that many students to our roles at the elementary level obviously added some more work to preparation for our schools that our, our support staff, our maintenance staff, and everyone got on board with to make sure that happened, so when the schools opened, the materials were there for them, and the transportation staff really rose to the occasion on the day, first day of school, to make sure the children arrived at school safely and got home safely. And that's the goal for every one of us. And we're never more reminded of that than on this Saturday. I want to thank the township, the mayor's office, and the Department of Recreation for inviting me to be at the anniversary of Christina LoBruto's and Brian Breen's death, the Pathmark shooting, and they had a memorial for her at Geik Park. It was a very moving ceremony, and they'll be doing one for Brian soon in Lawrence Harbor. And coming away from it, the most important message we take is that our number-one goal is to return the children at the end of the day in the same condition or better than when they arrived to us every morning, and that is something we must remember. And when we get caught up in the minutia of, you know, maybe the technology's not working one day, or it's not as easy, those things are just inconveniences. When the children arrive home safely, that is the number-one goal, and that's really something of an accomplishment, when you have close to 9,000 students coming to school every day and going home every day. So I want to thank the entire staff for all their work to make sure that that happened. Thank you. Ms. Kibler, please take us away into the world of elementary challenge.
Thank you, Mr. Sidedino. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'd like to present to you the progress that we've made on the elementary challenge program. Last spring, we appointed a curriculum writing committee for the elementary challenge program, and we spent numerous hours this summer and well into September creating a new curriculum and a whole new design of the program. But let me begin by taking you back to what our challenge program has been. The elementary challenge program for grades three through five usually started the last week in September. We have two teachers, Mr. Larry Lawrence and Mrs. Jennifer Washburn. Mr. Lawrence was responsible for teaching the math segment of the challenge program, and Mrs. Washburn for the English Language Arts. Then they, they each were assigned to six schools, and midway through the year, usually in February, they switched schools. And then children who had math would now have Language Arts and vice versa. In between the break, the teachers work very hard to gather the data and decide on the progress of the students and to carefully monitor the curriculum of the program. Now, moving forward, we created a new program. And we started, first of all, with a mission statement. The Old Bridge Township Public School Challenge Program recognizes the exceptional innate abilities of students and assists them in reaching their maximum potential through the use of higher-order thinking skills and strategies. The program provides a rigorous academic environment designed to meet the intellectual, creative, social, and emotional needs of gifted individuals within their unique culture. The challenge program fosters self-directed lifelong learners who will thrive and flourish as productive citizens and positive contributors to our society. The purpose of the challenge program is to provide an extended classroom instructional learning experience for the students who exhibit advanced learning capabilities. Now, in the past, the teachers met with each grade level, third, fourth, or fifth grade, for approximately 45 minutes to an hour once a week. We've redesigned the program, and we have been able to find a classroom at Voorhees School and a classroom at Shepherd School, and these rooms will now become a home to our challenge program. And the location, one will be at Voorhees, and the students from Miller, Southway, Carpenter, Grissom, Madison Park, and Sheraw will be bused to Voorhees. McDivitt, Cheesequake, Memorial, and Cooper will be bused to Shepherd. We work very closely with the transportation department to make this a great happening, and certainly the principals of Voorhees and Shepherd School were most receptive in housing the challenge program at their building. This provides a home for the teachers and for the students, so when they work on projects in their classrooms, they don't have to be dismantled or stored someplace, they have a working classroom, which is so very, very important to students and to the teachers to know that their program has, has a home. Now, the transportation component will work as follows. The children will be picked up at their home schools at 9:15 in the morning, and they'll arrive at their designated challenge class at 9:30. In the afternoon, they'll be picked up at their challenge class at approximately 1:30 and arrive back at their home school by 1:45. There will be two buses or vans will service each side of town. The lunch periods in our elementary schools were changed this year, and we have 11:22 to 12:13 and 12:13 to 1:03. The children will have lunch at their challenge school, and the preferred time is 11:22 to 12:13. Now, the one mandated program in our related arts program is physical education, and it's very possible that due to the scheduling in the individual twelve schools, that the children attending the challenge program might miss their physical education health period. So, as part of the challenge program, we will be providing mindfulness training, social skills, yoga, breathing, and stretching activities as part of the challenge program, which will fulfill the physical education requirement as mandated by the state of New Jersey. We will also be holding two parent meetings. They will be held at each location, one at Shepherd on September 23rd at 7:00, and one at Voorhees on October 2nd at 7:00. And we're holding these meetings to provide personal contact with the teachers, the program administrators, and to bring greater visibility and prestige to our program, which I think, you know, is, is very, very important in today's age with new Common Core standards and the PARC assessment. Now, our challenge program really begins down in kindergarten with our PETS program called Primary Education Thinking Skills. And these are lessons that are taught not only by the classroom teachers, but now because of our new design of the program, our challenge teachers will be able to go into kindergarten, first and second grade, and really get to know our students and begin to identify potential challenge students as they move into third grade. So our challenge program in grades three, four, and five will have one day dedicated to each grade level. Monday will be grade three, Tuesday is grade four, and Thursday is grade five. Now, the daily schedule, 9:30 to 9:53, the challenge, is the challenge homeroom, where you have, you know, your routine attendance, settling in, mindfulness activity. 9:54 to 10:37 will be instruction and introduction and lecture. 10:38 to 11:21, academic experience or a challenge lab. 11:22 to 12:17, lunch and social skills group. 12:18 to 1:01 is academic extension and planning groups. 1:01 to 1:25, an afternoon mindfulness activity, then closure, pickup, and estimated arrival back at school by 1:45. Now, moving on to the eligibility. In the past, the New Jersey ASK assessment was one of the primary indicators of participation in the challenge program, and as we went through and had discussions, we talked about a lot of criteria that had to be considered in making, in meeting the eligibility. First of all, we had a teacher recommendation. Some teachers may recommend the students highly average or not-so-high. Achievement on the NJAS in Language Arts, Literacy, and Math. High achievement would be 200, a score of 250 to 300, average 240 to 249, low 100 to 239, and the same in mathematics. Then our children also take a district assessment known as Rigby Literacy and Language Arts Literacy, and these tests provide a score on critical reading, inferential reading, and literal reading, and we look for proficiency in each area. Then there's a challenge assessment that is given, and again, there is a rubric that is used, and the score high would be five to six, average score would be four, low zero to three. Mathematics, a high score would be seven points, average six, and low five or less. Now, in fourth and fifth grade, the eligibility determination for, to be accepted would be a score of 10 to 14 points. A conditional acceptance would be an accumulation of points of eight to nine. In third grade, because there is no standardized assessment through the state that is administered to second graders, our third grade eligibility would be conditional acceptance with a seven to nine score, giving the teachers the opportunity to really work with the children and monitor their progress and to certainly look at their level of motivation and commitment to the program, because this is very, very important. They're being pulled out of their regular class during the course of the day, and there has to be a level of commitment and motivation. There is a letter that has been sent home to the parents of children who have been deemed eligible for the program, and it is necessary for the parent to attend one of the two parent meetings to meet the staff and be familiar with the program and how we're going to proceed with the academic rigor of the program. There is also a permission slip that has been provided where we request the parent to indicate whether they wish their child to participate in the program or not, again, understanding the rigor and expectations of the program. One of the first activities we did during the summer when we met with our educational consultant, who is a noted person in the field of gifted and talented programs, Dr. Sylvia Pastore, was to develop standards for our program, and the first standard is problem-solving, to identify the problem, organize information, apply problem-solving strategies, and evaluate results. Our second standard, critical thinking, to develop the ability to formulate questions, gather and assess relevant information to reach well-reasoned conclusions, think open-mindedly, and utilize alternative systems of thought effectively. Our third standard is communication, and unfortunately, it wasn't texting, it's verbalization. Students will develop the ability to plan, create, and present verbal, visual, and written information in order to effectively share thoughts and ideas with others. And the fourth standard, leadership, to develop the ability to identify and understand common characteristics of leadership such as kindness, intelligent, problem, intelligence, problem-solving, communication, cooperation, honesty, fairness, and confidence. Each grade level will have a theme. The grade three theme is cracking the code. There will be four units with approximately four to five lessons in each unit that the children will work through. The grade three unit is cracking the code. What is a code? How to read a code? How to create a code? And design and create a code. Grade four theme, investigation, innovation. Great expectations, great adventures, great leaders, and great challenges. The grade five theme, I evolve. The evolution of culture, the evolution of America, the evolution of science, and evolution of the solution. This is a very different program than what's been presented in the past, and I think you'll find that it's going to be very challenging in what we're asking our students to do, to think critically, to problem-solve, and to really expand their level of knowledge. Now, in considering the elementary program, we, we went a little bit further and talked about the middle school, too. So let me just bring you up to date of what's going on in the middle school. The students are scheduled in a team format, and they're enrolled in honors classes, and the special education classes are divided into random groupings based on the classes. The sample shows the sixth grade setup, but this repeats with other grades, and honors classes are progressively added in the seventh and eighth grade. Currently, we have math and ELA honors in the seventh grade, and in the eighth grade, we have math, ELA, science, and social studies honors classes. Moving on to the high school, we have quite a selection of advanced placement courses in math, English Language Arts, science, social studies, world language, career and technology, and fine arts. So there's quite a gamut of advanced placement courses for our high school students. There are also currently courses offered within mathematics, science, business, careers, and technology that offer college credit. For instance, Fairleigh Dickinson University offers Accounting III honors, Organic Chemistry honors, Psychology, Child Development III. Middlesex County College provides courses in pre-calculus honors, calculus honors, statistics and analysis, astronomy, AP Statistics, and AP Calculus. Now, some suggested ideas to segue the challenge program from the middle school to the high school level is to create a magnet program, for example, learning centers to focus upon specific career skills, engineering, medicine, business, and law. Investigate the possibility of pursuing the approval to offer the IB program for an international baccalaureate diploma. This program can run concurrently with our advanced placement courses. Create semester-long, project-based coursework to focus on music, art, language, mathematics, science, robotics, literature, theater, TV production. So these are some of the discussions that we had over the summer as we developed a new curriculum for the elementary challenge program. I'm extremely grateful to the following people who participated in this endeavor. Dr. Susan Miskowitz, principal of Cooper School, who couldn't be with us tonight, has been the principal in charge of the challenge program at the elementary level. Dr. Miskowitz will be retiring in January, and Mr. Joseph Maranzoli, principal of Cooper School, will be retired. The evolution of culture, the evolution of America, the evolution of science, and evolution of the solution. This is a very different program than what's been presented in the past, and I think you'll find that it's going to be very challenging in what we're asking our students to do, to think critically, to problem-solve, and to really expand their level of knowledge. Now, in considering the elementary program, we went a little bit further and talked about the middle school, too. So let me just bring you up to date of what's going on in the middle school. The students are scheduled in a team format, and they're enrolled in honors classes, and the special education classes are divided into random groupings based on the classes. The sample shows the sixth grade setup, but this repeats with other grades. And honors classes are progressively added in the seventh and eighth grade. Currently, we have math and ELA honors in the seventh grade, and in the eighth grade we have math, ELA, science, and social studies honors classes. Moving on to the high school, we have quite a selection of advanced placement courses in math, English Language Arts, science, social studies, world language, career and technology, and fine arts. So there's quite a gamut of advanced placement courses for our high school students. There are also currently courses offered within mathematics, science, business, careers, and technology that offer college credit. For instance, Fairleigh Dickinson University offers Accounting III honors, Organic Chemistry honors, Psychology, Child Development III. Middlesex County College provides courses in pre-calculus honors, calculus honors, statistics and analysis, astronomy, AP Statistics, and AP Calculus. Now, some suggested ideas to segue the challenge program from the middle school to the high school level is to create a magnet program. For example, learning centers to focus upon specific career skills, engineering, medicine, business, and law. Investigate the possibility of pursuing the approval to offer the IB program for an international baccalaureate diploma. This program can run concurrently with our advanced placement courses. Create semester-long, project-based coursework to focus on music, art, language, mathematics, science, robotics, literature, theater, TV production. So these are some of the discussions that we had over the summer as we developed a new curriculum for the elementary challenge program. I'm extremely grateful to the following people who participated in this endeavor. Dr. Susan Miskowitz, principal of Cooper School, who couldn't be with us tonight, has been the principal in charge of the challenge program at the elementary level. Dr. Miskowitz will be retiring in January, and Mr. Joseph Maranzoli, principal of Shepherd School, will take over the responsibilities for the challenge committee. Dr. Jean Ferrar, our math supervisor; Mr. Rocco Salantano, our ELA and social studies supervisor; Jennifer Washburn, our challenge teacher; Larry Lawrence, challenge teacher; Susan Shiao, our academic support/kindergarten teacher. She just went from one position to the other this year, and she was a terrific asset, bringing great information on both levels to us. Estelle Sharofsky, our special education teacher; Dr. Sylvia Pastore, our educational consultant for Gifted and Talented, and myself. This was a wonderful collaborative group that met over the summer, and I think we provided a very nice product to move forward with for our elementary students. So I thank you very much. If there are any questions, I will certainly be glad to entertain them. And this is the curriculum guide that will be adopted tonight. Yes, Mr. De Prima? I can't hear you.
Last, last month, there was a woman here who was concerned about her son, I think it was her son, who showed some kind of higher academics, I guess. Would this affect him at all, or was that addressed or resolved yet?
The lady that presented at the board meeting last year, last week, her concern is being discussed through committee.
It has nothing to do with the challenge, I guess? I'm sorry, it has, this wouldn't affect him in any way? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Kibler. Mr. Mara, are there any correspondents at this time? No correspondents. Special committee reports. Ms. Mongan, are you ready? Mr. Weber is not here. He's asked Ms. Mongan to address with the minutes and information from his meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Andriani. Mr. Weber asked me to report that he held a long-range, or he chaired a long-range planning meeting on September 8th. During that meeting, there was a demographic report presented by Mr. Ross Haber, who's a professional demographer and a retired educator. The report was multifaceted. It not only looked at enrollment trends going back five years and forward five years, it looked at building trends in the town, estimated growth of, due to housing or permits issued, how that would affect our schools. Mr. Haber went to each school and met with each principal and discussed class size and how each room in every building was used. And then he also went to the town planning board and received data from them on building permits and estimates for children being, entering the school district and affecting enrollments. And there is going to be another meeting to further review this very comprehensive report on October 9th at 7:00 PM. And Mr. Weber asked that anyone who is interested in learning about that, please come to attend the meeting. And he's also asked that the report issued by Mr. Haber be placed on the district website for review of the public if they are unable to attend the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Anyone else? Mr. Dunn?
Just want to remind everyone that on September 30th, we will have a Buildings and Grounds and Transportation's meeting at 7:00 PM. And I ask everyone who wants to participate to come out. Feel free. I know that we've had a few issues with some transportation glitches with bus stops and locations. This would be the time for anyone who has a concern to bring it to the committee's attention, and we'll discuss it entirely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. De Prima?
Yes, I scheduled a food service athletic complex event meeting for October, Wednesday, I believe it's Wednesday, October 1st, 7:00 PM in the central admin conference room. Of course, all are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Silikowski?
Yes, we had a meeting last night. I'm not going to discuss it because it's not going to be on the agenda until next week, but it was a very good meeting, and there's a lot of important information on policy. We will have our first curriculum meeting on October 7th, which is the first Tuesday of October. Thank you.
Okay, the technology meeting will follow that at, after that. Right. Okay, so the same day as the curriculum followed by technology. Heidi, thank you.
Mrs. Andriani?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brasili.
I'm down here.
Sorry.
That's okay. We'll have a finance committee meeting on next Tuesday, the 23rd. There is a new secretary's report that was developed that's going to be produced on a monthly basis. Mr. Mara will give us a presentation of the report and explain the details of it. It's just pretty much of a simplified secretary's report, which I think will be a little bit easier to understand for members of the public as well as members of the board, that will be able to look at on a monthly basis to really kind of understand what the finances and the state of the district is. So please come on out at 7 o'clock on the 23rd.
Okay, thank you. Anyone? Okay, just checking. Hearing of residence? Okay, at this time, I'd like to say that I think that the Board of Education has diligently been working to not go into executive session. We've been pushing that off to the end of the meetings, knowing how inconvenient it is for those people of the public that are here. Unfortunately, this evening, we do have something that we have to go into executive session for. Mr. Parton will explain. And, Mr. Parton?
Thank you. Yes, the board's going to go into a brief executive session for discussion of the memorandum of agreement with the Old Bridge Administrators Association and for one discussion of a personnel disciplinary matter. It should be extremely brief, we hope. You need a motion for that.
Yes.
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Brasili. Roll call, Mr. Mara.
Brasili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
The motion called to executive session passes.
Thank you. I promise we will be as quick as we can. Ladies and gentlemen, we have returned. Thank you very much for your patience. We did accomplish what we needed to accomplish. And at this point, we're going to move forward with our agenda items. We're on page three under Hearing of Residents for Agenda Items Only. If there's anyone at this time that would like to speak or comment or ask questions, have any... Is that a yes? No? Is there anyone on Agenda Items Only? Seeing no one from the public, thank you very much. We'll close this portion. Now what?
[INAUDIBLE] number one.
All right. At this point, we're moving into the policy section. We have several policy alerts for second reading, but what we need to do is have a motion to approve the following bylaws and policies, which is Agenda Item Number One under Policy Only. Is there someone?
I will move it.
Thank you, Mr. Silikowski. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Brasili, thank you very much. Mr. Mara, roll call.
Brasili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Don't tell anybody Mr. Weber's not here. All right, curriculum. Items number one, two, and three. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Who, Mr. Brasili?
Brasili.
Thank you very much. I need a second. Mr. Singh?
I'll sing it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Singh, any discussion? No, roll call, Mr. Mara.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Brasili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Thank you. Athletics. We need a motion for number one only?
Dunn will move athletics, item one.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I'm looking for a second.
Singh, a second.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Any discussion? Mr. Mara?
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Brasili?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motion one passes.
Thank you. Finance. We need a motion for finance items numbers, numbers one through 10, including the addendum.
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan.
I'll second. Brasili?
Mr. Brasili? Will second? Any discussion?
Separation, please.
Okay. Ms. Mongan, separation?
On the bill list, bill list number five, for voting purposes. And I would also ask, as chair of negotiations, I would like to recognize that there are two memorandums of agreement on the agenda for approval, one with the noon hour supervisors, one with the Principals Administrators Association. Negotiations meetings were held over the summer, and I want to thank the members of the negotiations team, including Mr. De Prima and Mr. Weber, as well as the administrators that were at the meetings, Mr. Sididino, Dr. Hoker, Mr. Mara, and, and the board attorney especially, who did an excellent job at negotiations with these labor units that are fair both to the public and to the members of the associations that serve our district well. And I would ask the board attorney to give a little summary.
Mr. Dunn, can you wait a few seconds on your discussion? Let Mr. Parton reiterate and explain what Ms. Mongan was looking for?
Absolutely. I was only going to separate point 10.
Okay, well, we'll separate number 10. For voting, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now, Mr. Parton?
Yes, thank you. The two memorandum of agreement that you have on your agenda tonight are, first of all, for the noon hour supervisors, the people who supervise the cafeterias throughout your school district, which is Union Local Number 74. Pursuant to the memorandum of agreement, which was reached on August 18th, this is a three-year deal with this group of employees, which is a relatively simple agreement. It will include some more efficient posting of vacancy rulings, some improved timing requirements for absence notification, and clarification of work hours on shortened school days, as far as the financial component goes. The hourly wages of these employees will be increased one and a quarter percent in the first year and 1% in the second and third years. We are also adding a longevity step of 20 cents when an employee, bless their heart, reaches 20 years of supervising the cafeteria. That agreement is well within your fiscal responsibilities and is, has already been ratified by Local 74, so all that remains there is the board vote, which will be conducted shortly. On the OBAA agreement, this is the collective bargaining unit representing your vice principals and principals throughout the district. This was a series of negotiation dates. We started this process in January, and we ended it last Friday night. And it is also going to be a three-year deal. It features many changes in language and tightening of your fiscal responsibilities in a very taxpayer and board-friendly manner while being fair to these hard-working building administrators. There is lock-in language for Chapter 78, which is the increasing health insurance contributions by employees. We have eliminated some mandatory sabbatical language, which constituted about $150,000 exposure each year to the board and taxpayers. There will still be discretionary sabbaticals, but no sabbatical will ever be a shall, as Mrs. Andriani liked to question. In terms of longevity steps and stipend amounts, those will be frozen for the life of the contract. Those values will be the same in June 2017 as they were in September 2013. Let me see what else we have to discuss. There are eliminations of some redundant reporting requirements, elimination of the so-called perfect attendance stipend, and the elimination of any sellback of vacation time. With regard to the financial package itself, in year one, members of the OBAA who are still moving through the salary guide steps will each move a step. The people who are already at the top will keep their compensation exactly the same in this school year as it was last school year. That is because they are approaching the central office level, and it is important to keep your salary guides structured district-wide to make some level of sense. In years two and three, the total salary guide base will be increased by one and three-quarters percent each year, with members already at the top, again, capped at 1% per year. Those are the top-line numbers. However, we also have some staffing changes and some transfers, the result of which will be that the cost to the taxpayers of this agreement will be a little bit over 0.6% per year. Again, this will enable you to move these hard-working employees through the steps, recognize the challenges that they face running your buildings on a day-to-day basis, while being extremely fair to your taxpayers. Again, you vote last. The OBAA had a ratification meeting last night and was successful in ratifying the agreement, so all that remains is for this to be presented, as it will be momentarily, to the board for a vote. Any questions? To the extent that we can answer them publicly, we'd be happy to do so, from the board and administrators?
All right, thank you, Mr. Parton. I'm, truthfully, I'm not quite sure how to call for a motion on this. We're looking for finance items one through 10, including an addendum, however, separating...
The addendum.
The addendum.
So you're, you're looking for a... Well, you have a motion... Well, you have a motion and a second on Numbers One through 10, so now you're having any further discussion and then a vote on One through Nine.
One through Nine.
Yeah, we have a separation.
I'm sorry, you're separating Five.
You've got Number Five. Bill is Five.
Oh, Bill is Five.
Sorry, Mrs. Mongan.
Can they just vote no? How do I...
Is it impossible for Ms. Mongan, if that's her intent to vote no, just to put no for the record now, and for Mr. Dunn to vote no vote for Item Number 10, and vote for everything else?
Yes, Mr.... Are those your intentions, Mr. Dunn and Mrs. Mongan?
Yes.
Certainly is.
Okay. Mr. Mara, you got that?
Yes.
All right, then you can proceed with discussion and a vote on all.
Thank you, Mr. Parton.
May I just interject one thing?
We were this close.
At last Tuesday's draft Agenda meeting, I did a presentation on the report of the Secretary, the new one that would be distributed to the Board members and to the public. And at that meeting, requests for the legend of all those accounts should be distributed to all the Board members and the administration. That legend is in your packet tonight, so if you would take that home and use that to compare that to the report of the Secretary, it'd definitely make it more informative. And after this meeting, my secretary will email that legend document, which is nine pages, to all the Board members. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mara. All right. At this time, we're going to have a vote for Finance Items One through 10, separating Number 10 for voting purposes, which is a no vote for Mr. Dunn, and Bill List Number Five for Ms. Mongan. Otherwise, we're voting for everything else in its entirety.
That's correct. Any further discussion?
Any further discussion? Roll call, Mr. Mara.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Borceli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motions passed as Mrs. Andriani described.
Don't ask me to describe it again. Okay.
Just before you move on, just a second. Before, I just want to answer a question, too, that was brought up during the Agenda session. It was about the laptop carts. And it was a question of how many laptops per cart. And I quoted you, I believe there's 25. And Ms. Roseanne Moran is back now from her personal leave, her health leave, and she has told me that there are 30 laptops per cart, so better than we expected.
Okay. Thank you very much. Non-certificated personnel office, which is Numbers One through Five, One through Four, we need a motion, first and second.
Mrs. Andriani, before you get a motion?
We need to change the language?
There is, yes. Based on the executive session discussion, there is a revision to Item Number Four, which will be in its entirety as read, and then adding at the end and require said employee to undergo a fitness-for-duty assessment at the direction of the Assistant Superintendent of Schools. Mr. Mara, did you get that, or shall I repeat it?
Let me just get it, and then I'll read it back to you. Okay. Move the Board... Move the Board to approve paid administrative leave to Employee 3829, effective August 21st, pending administrative clearance to return, and require said employee to undergo fitness-for-duty under the directive of Assistant Superintendent.
Fitness-for-duty assessment. Other than that, you nailed it.
Okay. Got it?
Okay. May I have a motion?
Dunn will make a motion. Non-certificated personnel office, Items One through Four, as amended, Number Four.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dunn.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mr. De Prima. Do we have any discussion? No. So at this time, we're calling for a vote, Mr. Mara, with One through Four, with language for Number Four as revised.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Borceli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motions One through Four pass.
Thank you very much. You're not with me, Mr. Parton. Give me a number. Okay. Numbers One through 15 on non-certificated personnel. Other, I need a motion?
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. I need a second?
Sing will second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Singh. Okay, that's a no. Mr. Mara, roll call.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Borceli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motions One through 15 pass.
Thank you. Certificated personnel, Items One through 16, with Number Five being administratively removed.
Dunn will move certificated personnel.
Thank you very much.
One through 16 with administration.
Mr. Dunn?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I need a second?
Mongan will second.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. At this point, we're open for discussion?
Yes, Ms. President?
Mr. Dunn?
Yes, I just want to recognize, there's a few names on the Agenda that I do recognize this evening, and it's always refreshing to see graduates of Old Bridge High School come back and want to become employees in the district. And I want to commend those individuals. I believe they're in the audience tonight. And I appeal to other graduates of Old Bridge High School who have gone through college and want to come back and work for the district to do so. It's important that we have those people here because it makes our school district better. So thank you for your hard work and dedication to come back to the school district.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Anyone else? Roll call, Mr. Mara.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Borceli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motions One through Six, minus Five, pass.
Okay. Non-certificated personnel transportation, Items One and Two.
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Second, please.
Single second.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Is there any discussion? Items One and Two? Does not appear to be so. Mr. Mara, roll call.
Borceli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motions One and Two pass.
Thank you. Transportation, one item only, Number One.
Mongan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan.
Dunn will second transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Is there any Board discussion? Again, does not appear to be so. Mr. Mara, roll call.
Borceli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Resolution One passes.
Thank you very much. Miscellaneous, One through Four.
Dunn will move miscellaneous, Items One through Four.
Thank you.
Mongan will second.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Mr. Mara, just typographical reporting, Number Two should be 14. Thank you.
It should also be August.
This should be, yes, it's the month of August, as opposed to June? Thank you. Discussion? All right. Mr. Mara, roll call.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Borceli?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Motions One through Four pass.
Thank you. Any additional Board business from you at this point? No? All right. Mr. Mara, thank you very much. At this point, in our meeting schedule, we open the floor up to any questions, comments, discussion from the public. Is there anyone in here that would like to speak on any item at all? Ms. Foster had her hand up first, so you're first. Please go up to the podium. Make sure that you stand back a little bit so we do not have some sound back. You need to press the button so you have a red light.
There we go.
And please give us your name.
Hi. I'm Kelly Ellis Foster.
I'm Dawn Dunn.
And we are here tonight as members of the Old Bridge Marching Knights Parent Association, Band Parent Association. And I think some members of the Board are aware, I'm not sure if, how much of the public is aware, but our Old Bridge Marching Knights have a fabulous opportunity this year. For those who may not know about the band, if you've ever had a football game, they're at all of the football games, both home and away. They perform in the stand. They do their competition show on Saturdays. They're a competition band. In 2012, they were national champions. They're usually first or second in the state. Because of all their hard work and dedication, last year in 2013, they were the New Jersey representatives to the Fourth of July Parade in Washington, DC. And this year, we thought we couldn't top the DC Parade. It was a great experience. This year, the band is the representative of the East Coast, as well as only one of five bands in the United States, that has been invited to participate in the 71st Anniversary Remembrance Ceremony in Normandy, France, for D-Day. So it's a really great, it's a fabulous opportunity for the school, for the students. It's a testament to all their hard work and their dedication. And because of that, it is a quite expensive trip. So the band parents are working with the students in trying to fundraise as much as we can. So hopefully, throughout the year, you'll be hearing about all the different fundraising activities we have. And so we're just here today to make sure the Board knows about all of our activities and is sure will help support us and will get more out to the community. Two, a couple of things that are coming up, if people want to keep an eye out for, at all the home football games, we have our little wristbands that will say Knights to Normandy. Anyone, if you'd like to, you can buy one today for $2. We'll be at those. We also, one of the events we're going to be doing in the school in December is a dance marathon. It is a 10-hour dance marathon, not an overnight dance marathon, and so we can get all, the whole school community involved in it. And then in April, we will be doing a golf tournament. So we just wanted to come today to let everybody know about it, keep an eye open for all the activities. And again, we're just very proud of the students to have such an honor. So, okay? Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to buy one of those, if I can reach my pocketbook.
I'll be there afterwards. I'll be there afterwards.
All right. Thank you very much. Second hand belong to this lady. Please come up. Again, stand back far enough so we don't have any background... I'm sure there's a technical name for that.
Feedback?
Feedback. That works. Press the button, red light. Please tell us your name.
My name is Denise Bapst. I am here as a parent of a second-grade student at McDivitt Elementary School. I am here to voice my concern of the class size. There are 26 students in each second-grade class at McDivitt School. We are new to the Old Bridge School District. I'm not new to education, being a 17-year veteran teacher. Concern with a second-grade class having 26 students in it, in preparation for Park next year, and also following of Common Core. Mrs. Kletty has been very welcoming and wonderful, and I appreciate everything that she has done for my two boys entering this school. But I am here to express concern of the class size in a second grade with 26 students. I do know that last year in first grade, there were four sections of first grade, and that this year in second grade, there are now only three sections, which caused the increase in class size. So I'm here just to express my concern and to see if there's something that can be done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sididino. Ms. Kibler, would you like to make a comment about that at this time, or...
Yes. And your concerns were shared with us at the Agenda meeting. A few, two other parents from McDivitt School had come forward and addressed their concerns, and we provided them with information as to how these decisions are made, and then some clarification on the number of students. And if I'm wrong on any point, I'll direct my follow-up to Ms. Kibler, who tracks the number of enrolled students in the elementary-level classes. So at that section, I believe that the average is 23 for general education students in those classrooms. And then there are some push-in students for certain classes that take place that can equate to 26. But there's not always 26 students in the class. The district administratively, when we put a teacher in a classroom and look at the enrollment, and we do that on a continuous basis, because the enrollment does fluctuate throughout the course of the year and over the course of the summer, we have a very broad spreadsheet that allows us to see where bubble grades are and where classroom sets are expanding. But at the end of the day, we're bound by a Board operational policy, which is, I believe, 28 at that grade level. If we were to exceed 28, then we would have, we would be in violation of our own policy, and we would have to put another section in. But until we do that, we cannot just add a section at that time, when we have 23 general education students in the class, and then at time for certain classes that take place during the day, 26 students go in there. But they do come in, and this was clarified, too, through a special education supervisor and director that were at the same meeting, but each, they do come in with assistance of a paraprofessional when the 26 students come into the classroom.
I just want to reiterate. So you're saying that in one of the classes, there are three special education students that are in a team-teaching setting, or a paraprofessional comes in for in-class assistance? My son in his class has neither, and there are 26 students that are in that class at all times. So if you're talking of the three sections, one section has three special education students based upon their IEP, in which the paraprofessional comes in to push in for in-class assistance, one section, then the other two sections are sitting at 26. And those three students, are they in all day, or do they leave, based upon their IEP? They are included on the roster as 26, correct?
Right. That's the homeroom number.
Right.
Points during the day that they come out and go to a resource room, as does their paraprofessional.
That's one section, correct? Of the three?
I would have to ask Dr. Tui to come forward, he might have some more clarification on that, that section. If you don't have that information available to you, there's.
I understand. But just to clarify.
And I can get back to you, and you can give me a call during the day.
That would be wonderful, just 26 in preparation park, and that wonderful new program for the challenge program, which we are preparing our students for, for third grade, is an enormous amount of students. Thank you.
The information that we do have is, that was shared with us at the time, was the 23 per class in each of those three sections. I will have Dr. Tui get back to me and provide me the information. I invite you to call me tomorrow in my office, and I could share that information with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There was another gentleman? Yes? Again, stand back a little bit, so we don't have any feedback, which is the correct term. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Head. My name is Srini Chandupatla. First of all, I would like to say thank you for seeing the great challenger program at elementary school. And so, I would like to bring a couple of concerns here. I wrote like a multiple emails on the, our school academic performance, based on the New Jersey State reports. So, our elementary schools are doing extremely good, but when you look at the middle school and high school, we are in the lagging in comparison, like in the economic performance, which means like that is a lowest but one rating. So, I would like to know from the Board of Education, did you guys see the reports thoroughly? And did you guys find out like, what is the reason for the lowest rating in Old Beach? If you look at like, compared to the other neighborhood towns, which are doing extremely good, of course, not, it might not be extremely good, but at least they are doing better than Old Beach Town. So, my question here is, like, how, like, we need to find out the root cause, like where we are lagging? And what are the things that we need to get, bring into the schools to improve those, like, to fix the root cause? Probably, everyone might be working very hard, but we need to work very smart to achieve that, okay? So, I would like to listen, like, to know, like, what are the measures that you guys are taking in? And I would like to recommend one thing, suppose, probably you might be looking into the, like, that in the defensive manner, okay? There might be like, different economic groups in the Old Beach. But if you look at the per capita income in Old Beach, it is much higher than Seerville, but the performance in Old Beach schools are lagging than the Seerville. If, I came to this town seven years ago, that time, Old Beach was doing extremely good, better than the Seerville. But if you look at the today's report, our reports are going down year over year. So, my recommendation is, like, we need to engage some external consulting or research educational firm. And we need to show the reports, and we need to get the recommendations from them, and where we are lagging. And we need to get the reports from them, and we need to see how can we improve it. Thank you.
I will just address some of your questions, because I know I did meet with a friend of yours who raised some of these concessions, he met in my office, and we went over a few things. Just trying to wrap up everything you said in my head. So, when we compare ourselves to our neighbors, one of the things I was brought to his attention that, you know, geography has very little to do with performance. And to say, you know, our neighbors are doing well, I think the example, and this is not an excuse, because one of the things I always say is that, that the greatest room in any organization is the room for improvement, and we all agree to that. And that's why we've had, put in place some academic changes to our programs, such as the challenge program you see tonight, such as full-day kindergarten, which we believe wholeheartedly will have its greatest impact on a district just like Old Bridge, who has a demographics just like Old Bridge, with a socioeconomic situation that Old Bridge is. Our students need full-day kindergarten maybe more than Marlboro, which was brought up as an example, as, you know, how come our scores aren't the same as Marlboro? Old Bridge is inherently different than Marlboro. And while we do want to improve, we continue to improve, the other thing we talked about was our RTI program, our Response Intervention. Response Intervention wasn't just an idea we brought up because we thought it was a very nice acronym, and it'd be great to have a supervisor in that. It was brought up surely because when we look at our hard data, our greatest area is our gaps, that is, in-school gaps for achievement. Meaning that our highest performers and our lowest performers, there's a huge gap between them. And then we looked even more at that data, it was the students that were in district factor groups that were a great concern. Our students who were from certain minority groups, our students that were from households with lower socioeconomics than others. And we tied that all together, and when we look at that, although it's not where I want it to be, district factor group-wise, Old Bridge is at or above the state average for district factor group. Now, one of the points that people have brought up recently is, you know, and there's different, I think the Great Schools was the website that was brought up. And Great Schools looks at different factors when deciding school performance. And it's similar to what someone had brought up recently about New Jersey Monthly Magazine, saying, you know, Old Bridge, this year, Old Bridge High School was rated 158th of all high schools across the state of approximately 371, I believe we have 371 high schools. And said, well, how come it's 158? Well, in 2008, we're number 211. And then the following, it's done every two years, the next cycle is 178. So, we have shown that increase, that we're going in the right direction. Are we there yet? No, sir, I agree with you 100%. And that's why we brought programs in, like RTI, full-day kindergarten, because they have a trickle-up effect. Well, RTI will affect those students now, especially at the middle school level, which seems to be the hardest area to make that change. The full-day kindergarten, we believe, will create a broad foundation of strength for those students coming in with their early skills, and assist them as they move through the middle school and into high school.
You are saying there is a big gap between the highest performing to the lowest performing? Like, what are you guys doing to motivate the lowest performing students bring up?
Well, that's the point of the RTI, and that's why we're bringing RTI. RTI looks at those lower performing areas, and doesn't, it's not about special education, it's about making interventions for general education students to assist them based upon their needs and performance. So, the problem with education over the course of many years, it's, it was unlike a doctor's prescription. You know, when you go to the doctor and you have a stomach ache, he may give you something to settle your stomach, but if you go to the doctor with a fever, he's not going to give you the same medicine. Well, education, over the course of many years, was done, was done not that way. It wasn't individualized, it wasn't differentiated. So, with the RTI program, we can put interventions in specifically for the student needs, based upon the data we have from our Score the Scores Initiative, that identifies each student, and where their needs or improvement are academically. And that's where we're looking to go with it. So, it was interesting in that meeting that I had, that Marlboro was used, as a matter of fact, because our highest performing students outperform their highest performing students. And I think for your friend, that was quite a shock. They're saying, well, I said, if you're comparing apples to apples, and oranges to oranges, you have to break it down by scoring factor areas. And Marlboro, in its reporting, you have to have a certain percentage of students in that factor area to report it. So, they didn't have enough students of socioeconomic to report, so they didn't have it for that group. They didn't have enough African-American students to report, they didn't have enough Hispanic students to report. But the one thing they had plenty of was high-performing students. And we have plenty of high-performing students. And our high-performing students, I believe in the area of mathematics, outperform their high-performing students. So, while it's not perfect, and we have some areas to grow, like I said, there are spots of sunshine and growth that we're seeing, and we're going to continue to grow in that way.
That can be true, but if you look at the, like, our elementary schools, it's extremely performing, performing good. And even if you look at the state report cards, which is like a highly advanced achievement rating. So, why, like, I'm thinking, like, from our kids, we are pushing them to, like, a high-performing to low-performing schools. So, why it's happening? Like, if you look at the elementary schools, there are like a 60% of the students coming from high performance rating to the middle school. But middle school is lagging, coming under the lagging performance rating. So, there should be something we need to do, okay? So, that's the reason I would like to recommend to bring external consulting firm or research firm, and do a thorough investigation where we are lagging, and we need to improve that area definitely.
I would recommend to have your expertise in any one of our meetings, that we can look at, you know, we have our curriculum meeting is when?
Well, we moved it, I think.
7th of October.
October 7th.
October 7th, there's our curriculum meeting, and that's where we look at our programs that impact students, not only from our highest performing students to our lowest performing students. So, that might be a good place for you to share that expertise with us, and then get some more information about the interventions we have put in place to address, you know, again, the middle school, no doubt, historically, not only in Old Bridge, but across the country. Middle school is a place where scores generally dip. And so, we can look at it there, and we have seen some growth in the areas, because, you know, we've changed our math program, and now we're, and our language arts program. So, hopefully that'll work. I'd like to see you there and be part of that team.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else at this time? No? All righty. Then I'll close that section of the meeting. Is there anyone on the board at this time that would like to bring up any old business?
I'm not sure if it's old business or new business, but I have something I'd like to speak about.
Okay.
As Chairperson of the Athletic Complex Event Committee, I'm a little disturbed by something that's going around town. You know, Old Bridge is great for rumors. Regarding the concession stand, as everybody knows, I was not on the board when the concession stand was voted in, but as you also probably know, I was a big part of the old stand and the new stand as a PTSA officer for many years. People are telling me that apparently the new stand is not being utilized to its fullest extent. The PTSA cannot use the grill or the fryer. That's incorrect. And for the past year and a half, the PTSA has been using the grill and the fryer, as have outside organizations, as have many organizations, and it's working very well. As far as certification, there is always some, on the PTSA side, for sure, I myself am certified, so I know there's always a certified person there overseeing, for lack of a better term, what's going on. And I know for a fact, at least the outside organizations that I've dealt with also have certified people, so we are covered at all times as far as needing the proper people there. And it's also being said that we have to pay to have somebody there to, I guess, monitor the activities, but that's also not true. You know, regular custodial fees or whatever, but I believe the outside organizations cover that anyway, so. I just, you know, I, the concession stand has gotten so much bad press in the past, that I don't want people out there getting the misconception of, it's fine. You know, yeah, it was a big undertaking, but if you go to a football game, it's the center of town on a Friday night, and I just don't want people to have the wrong idea. The PTSA is using all the facilities, and there is no cost when outside entities use it. And if there is a cost, it's covered by them. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. De Prima. Since you brought it up, there is a few things that I would like to say first, and then, Mr. Dunn, you can go, and then, Mr. Sedino. I also, too, have now seen some of that information out there. And not to belabor the point, I think that a lot of people have a misconception about the certification, and part of the certification is to actually protect our investment and your tax dollars. I don't think that we would be doing a prudent job if we didn't have certified people in attendance. We live in a litigious society, which is unfortunate, but is very true. And for us to have someone that has, holds the certification for food service handling, and/or whatever the current term is, protects us from lawsuits that could be monetarily damaging to the school district. So, I'd like to say that out front. Secondly, the other, the original one that we had, we had a variety of residents that lived in there, which was certainly not acceptable. I don't need to go into what particular type of insects or rodentia, but we had visitors all the time. It certainly was not sanitary condition. In terms of electricity, the amount of times that we came extremely close to electrical fires was incredible. The wiring was old, the wiring was faulty, and most of the wiring was food for the squirrels. And we needed to update that. As with anything else in a school district, once you begin to create updating of any facility, you need to come up to different codes. Agree or not agree is not the issue. But when we began to investigate improving the facilities, we needed new bathrooms, they had to be ADA compliant. So, what turned out to be a simple renovation turned into coding violations and upgrading of a variety of issues in the facility. In terms of location, anybody that has ever played on that field, twirled a baton on that field, or tried to run on that field, in its old state, knows that it was a basin and a catch-all for rocks, mosquito larvae, and a variety of other things. So, the location for the concession stand, where it may not be the optimum place that you may think, engineering-wise was. So, there were, there are reasons for all of those upgrades and all of those choices and decisions that were made. So, I needed to point that out, too, because I was a little disappointed when I started to hear about some of the things that were being said. So, with that, Mr. Dunn, your turn.
Thank you, Mrs. President. As we all know, we're going into an election cycle in November, and there's going to be a lot of misrepresentation, a lot of falsehoods, and a lot of rhetoric that's going to be spread through social media. And that seems to be the outlet now for people to get their word out, I guess, to, you know, constituents or to different groups. And don't believe that everything you see on social media. And I think that's the point, I think there's been some stuff that's been circulating on social media, and a lot of that is just rhetoric. It's falsehood, there's no fact, it's only fiction. If the individuals who are sending out this information would know better, and dig deeper, and participate in these meetings, they would know that what they're distributing is falsehoods. So, to Sal's point and to Donna's point, please, you know, if you need information, you have any questions or concerns, we never hid from the public. We're here to answer questions, and we will be always honest and forthright. So, social media could be a very big benefit for one's campaign, but it also can be an outlet for falsehoods and fictitious comments. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Sedino, you wanted to make a comment?
I'm not really weighing in on the warrants of the concession stand. Just, I wanted to, sometimes people try to put a dollar and a cents on things, and how much money something can make, and, you know, when you, when you put a library in a school, or you put a, you know, even like the middle schools have a bookstore, it's not about how many pencils you're going to sell in that bookstore, it's about, the kids come in, they work in the bookstore, they get experience working in there, they stock the shelves, there's an educational value to it. And the concession stand is part of a program that is far-reaching, not just, you know, for athletics and everything else, it's a part of a community center. And I don't think that was ever more realized than when we had the lacrosse game for Steven. That event raised in excess of $50,000 for his family. A large portion of that came from that concession stand that night. And in fact, I challenge to say that if any restaurant in Old Bridge on that night, we exceeded their sales, if any restaurant in Old Bridge that night, because I think we, I think we took in over $20,000 just in the concession stand that night, in profit. So, you know, that's what it's about sometimes. It's not about, you know, how many hot dogs you're going to sell, it's about what change can you make in someone's life through an educational program?
All right, thank you, Mr. Sedino. Any other old business, Ms. Mungan?
Yes, I just wanted to add, as far as new business, as we went through the committee reports, almost every board member spoke on an upcoming committee meeting, and whether it's finance, buildings and grounds, the facility use, policy, all of these meetings, if you're attending them, you will be providing input, and listen to information that is correct and accurate, and be able to provide input and feedback to the board members. Because the school year has just started, but in terms of time, now, all the plans will be made for the next school year, as far as finance and budget, as far as what improvements need to be done in any buildings, or upgrades, or transportation, or what curriculum will we offer next year? Will we add new courses? Will we add a new program? Take away a program that's not working, et cetera? All these things will be discussed at these meetings, and discussed many times before you see a motion put on an agenda. So, please, if you have an interest, or you have the time, I know it's difficult, attend the meetings, they're posted, they're advertised, and, you know, as said tonight, I think the 23rd, next week, there is a finance meeting, the 30th, Building, Grounds and Transportation, the 7th, Policy, the 9th, Long Range Planning, and I forgot the date of your meeting, Sal. The 1st of October, so there, there's a meeting for everyone, an interest. The 1st of October, so there's a meeting for everyone, an interest for everyone, so just, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Adriani, can I just add on that for a second, please? As Mrs. Mangan just said, if everybody remembers up here, I'm sure you do, there was a lady that came to our agenda meeting. She was a little apprehensive about speaking. I don't know why she was afraid, but when she was done, she was thrilled about her, how the board and central administration responded to her, everybody was able to answer her questions to her liking, and she left, like, it was great, she was so happy that she did it. You know, please, come out. I chair the Food Service Athletic Complex Event Committee. My meeting is October 1st, I know there's been some issues this year about the menu. Please, the director of food services will be there, we'd love to hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Prima. Can I just add something real quick?
Yes, Mr. Borselli.
To add on to Ms. Mangan's point, Olbridge School District is one of the few school districts in the state of New Jersey, and I just recently, within the past year or so as I've been on the board, have found this out. And we're one of the few school districts in the state of New Jersey that makes our committee meetings open to the public. We want the public's input, we want you there, we want to hear what you have to say. That's how many of us have gotten involved as well. I started by coming to committee meetings, and Mr. Dunn started coming to committee meetings and so on. So please, come out, and, you know, even if you just sit there and just listen in on things, sometimes you'll gain a lot more information than you will just from watching these regular meetings on TV. So just come out from time to time and listen, and if you have any input, that's great, give us the input as well. But, you know, we are committed as well to making sure that our committee meetings remain open to the public. We want that transparency, and we want the public to have a voice.
Thank you, Mr. Borselli. I would just like to add that when you see us up here, we're already at the point where we are beginning to take a vote and have a motion to approve or reject items that have been put on the agenda. These are not the work sessions. So, everything that's on these papers have been discussed at our agenda session, which is a week prior to this, it was last Tuesday, and public is welcome. In terms of the committee meetings, everybody has strengths and weaknesses, and everybody has expertise in a variety of areas, and as members of the public, you have concerns about issues that are important to you. That would be the place to voice them, so that you have the opportunity to have them discussed, as opposed to, by all means, come and voice your concerns at a televised meeting. But at that point, it's a little late for us to actually incorporate those in a discussion for that evening. So please, consider coming to any of the committee meetings. They're all open, and they're all advertised in a variety of places, as well as on the websites, so. So that's old business and new business kind of combined together. I don't know if anybody else has anything else to say?
Can I have a new business item?
Go ahead.
Just a new business item, that this Saturday is Olbridge Day in Olbridge. It is from 10 till 4 in the municipal parking lot. The township does a great job with this, it's a great opportunity to meet people from the community and see what local businesses do, and it's something to be very proud of to be a part of for Olbridge. So I hope to see you there, hopefully the weather is great.
Okay, at this point, I guess we're getting ready to close. Is there anyone that would like to make closing comments, is a good of the order?
Yeah, I will say something.
Mr. Silikowski.
I would like to echo Mr. Borselli's comments on the meetings inviting the public. I believe last night we had the policy meeting, and our legal counsel said that there's only two or three school districts in the state of New Jersey that invite the public to these meetings, am I right?
Yes, it is highly unusual to have that level of public inclusion in your committee meeting.
Right. So we do really need the public to get involved, to put their input into basically what's going on in our school system. I would like to wish our students a very productive year, a good year. Hopefully, everybody will do well and succeed. I would like to wish all our new hirees a great year and their new careers. And tomorrow, Ms. Adriani and I, we're going to donate a little time. We'll be at the Shoprite Bagging for Partners in Caring, and all this money will be given to the food bank over here at the local level in Olbridge. We'll be there from approximately 11 o'clock till about 1:00 or 1:30. We would like to see some of you that are available. Thank you. Good night.
Anyone else?
Mrs. President?
Yes, Mr. Dunn.
I have a few words. Thank you. The first day of school was very successful, and quite frankly, it was a fantastic day, and I want to commend the administration for making it a half-day. And a half-day made life a lot easier for many parents and also the students, because a half-day allowed them to get acclimated to a new school year. They knew where their buses were, they knew what to expect, they were able to get their books, they were able to get themselves situated, and then they were able to go home. So, making the first day of school was an excellent decision, I think we benefited it, and the students benefited as well. Number two, I just want to congratulate the negotiations team here on the Olbridge Board of Education, which include, of course, Ms. Mangan, Mr. Weber, and a few others, and also Sal De Prima, Chris Parton, and of course, our illustrious superintendent. They did a fabulous job, and that tells a tale that we are being very prudent and very wise with the taxpayers' money. It'll be very easy to give in to all the different organizations and different bargaining units, but they didn't. They worked the problem, they solved the problem, they found a fair and equitable solution, and I just want to commend them for the hard work. And that shows that this Board of Education is engaged and doing the very best for this community. And number three, real quick, I know there's enrollment concerns, I know we had a parent here this evening who was concerned about enrollment, and I just want to make something very clear to the public that the Board of Education and the administration is extremely sensitive to enrollment numbers, specifically in the elementary division. It's always been a topic of concern and a discussion at numerous meetings, and there are a few sections within the public schools, specifically the elementary division, that have 26 students. And I know that we do a great job in trying to juggle our staff and juggle our resources to minimize the overcrowding, but again, based upon the situation, based upon where you live, sometimes classes will be full, and we do try our best to solve those issues. And again, we are very sensitive to that situation. With that, I just want to thank everyone for coming this evening, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Borselli, would you like to add while we're on this side of the table?
I'll just say that I think it's been a terrific start to the school year, a quiet start, and that's the way it should be. You know, we're here, as Mr. Siedino mentioned earlier, you know, for the well-being of the children, their education, and essentially to send them home in better shape than they came to us. So I hope that it continues through the remainder of the year, that we have a nice, quiet year and a very productive year. Best of luck to all of our students and all of our staff as well.
Thank you. This way, Mr. Silikowski, Mr. De Prima, and we're good, Ms. Mangan, Mr. Singh.
I'll just chime in with the same sentiment, that it's good to see the public participation in our meetings, and I urge that they should grow more, because unless you participate, we won't know what's going on with the public's mind, and you have the real issues that you face with your kids. And I really appreciate you coming here and bringing more friends, and I want to appreciate the great work done by our attorney, by doing some good jobs in some settlements, and of course, our leader, Mr. Siedino, is doing a really good job, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. At this time, there is, it's my turn, I think I'm the only one left. We always say thank you and to a lot of people up here, and Ms. Kibler had the opportunity to speak to the public a few minutes ago, and I'm not letting Dr. Hoker talk because it's, we want to get out of here early. But, we, the administration, as Mr. Dunn said, the school had a relatively smooth opening, and we thank you for that. And the two of you, Mr. Siedino, Mr. Mara, I want to thank you very much for being a big part of the planning and the efficiency and getting us up and running very smoothly. And with that, I wish all the students, all the teachers, a great year. So we look for good things, bigger and better things, all right? And with that, I guess it's time to adjourn, unless anyone else has an issue with that. So we need a motion for that.
Mangan will move.
Thank you, Ms. Mangan.
Dunn will second.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Any discussion? No. Mr. Mara.
Borselli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mangan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Yes.
Adriani?